You're watching WS TV Digital Media.
Good evening. I called over this June 20th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and asked the city secretary to call the roll.
Councilmember Light.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Vessi.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you join the city council and me in a moment of silence, Thank you. And would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight is Lieutenant Rob Peterson. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Let me have the first item.
Proclamation declaring June National Safety Month. Whereas our city recognizes the adverse effects of the workplace accidents on physical well-being of our employees as well as the emotional and economic impact on families and communities, and it is committed to promoting a safe work environment for all of its employees, and whereas our ongoing efforts to continually improve upon the safety of our work environments is the responsibility of all employees and relies greatly on the expertise of safety professionals in the understanding and application of safety procedures and policies, and whereas the National Safety Council, a nonprofit organization of which the city is a member, is dedicated to providing education and other resources to entities, both public and private, to promote a safe workplace and to prevent accidents, and whereas the NSC has declared June as National Safety Month with the goal of raising awareness of and providing resources to address the leading causes of injury and death at work, on the roads, and at home, and whereas National Safety Month provides us with an additional opportunity to encourage employees interested in requesting resources from or providing feedback to the city's Risk Management Division regarding employee safety-related issues. Now therefore, I, Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim June 2016 as National Safety Month in Winston-Salem, and I encourage our citizens to join with their communities to participate in National Safety Month activities.
Thank you. We have presented this, and would like to call on Nick Webster, who is the Risk Manager for the City of Winston-Salem, and we have Julie Carter, who's Assistant Risk Manager, Ted Byram, who's the Assistant Fire Chief and head of the Winston-Salem Fire Department Safety Program, Barbara Cassidy, who is the current member of the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Association of Local Government Employee Safety Officials, as well as Sybil Bray and Stephanie White of North Carolina Department of Labor. So if you'd like to come forward and anybody make a comment.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tempore, and ladies and gentlemen of the city council. I understand that you have a full slate this evening, so I'll be very brief. First of all, I think that we can all agree that there are few things more important than the physical well-being of both our employees as well as the members of our community, and that is why I want to thank you for this proclamation, because it further reinforces what I've seen since I began working here. That is a commitment at all levels of city leadership to promoting a safe workplace environment. So thank you very much for this. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Nick. If anyone else would like to be heard?
(laughing).
Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of the city council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of this council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and enacted individually. This meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our meetings, are always online, available online at the city's website, www.cws.org, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, we have several items we need to pull off the consent agenda. Item C-9J, which was a demolition item, which I understand that particular residence has the deficiencies have been corrected. Items C-14 and 15 need to be pulled, so that we may excuse Councilmember Montgomery from that item, and then item C-16, which is also shown on the general agenda. Are the other items that any council member would like to pull?
Hearing none, I move to pull at the balance.
Second motion, second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Thank you. So we'll go to items C-14 and 15.
Do we just need a motion?
We just need a motion to excuse Councilmember Montgomery from items 14 and 15.
I move that we excuse Councilmember Montgomery from C-14.
Second.
You can do 14, 15.
And 15.
Motion, second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. So Councilmember Montgomery, you're excused from voting. Now I have a motion now on items 14.
I move that we accept, approve C-14 and C-15.
Second.
Motion, second. End discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous with Councilmember Montgomery being excused from voting on that. And then item C-16 we'll deal with on the general agenda. So we now will go back to the general agenda, which is comprised of two parts, the regular general agenda as well as the adoption of the annual city budget. As the next order of business, we will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget. When the public hearing is held, persons in the council chamber who have signed up to speak will be called upon, at which time we'd ask you to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes each. After hearing from everyone who wishes to speak, the public hearing will be closed, and the city council will consider each budget item. Before we get started with the public hearing, I may ask Assistant City Manager Bud Rao just to give us a brief summary and update on the proposed annual budget.
Good evening, Mayor Joins, and members of the city council.
Good evening.
Back on May 26, the city manager distributed his proposed budget, and we made it available for viewing by citizens at all the city's recreation centers, city library branches, and on the city website. Over the last few weeks, the city council's Finance Committee has held three budget workshops, as well as a public hearing, and the Public Safety Committee has reviewed the budgets for police, fire, and emergency management. The Finance Committee last Tuesday recommended a budget of totaling $442.2 million, which consists of three parts: $326.7 million for operations, $41.5 million for debt service, and $74 million for capital. So some highlights, the budget this year includes a proposed increase in the property tax rate of two cents, bringing the rate from 56.5 cents to 58.5 cents, to address three fundamental areas of city government: employee compensation, equipment, and facilities. A number of employee compensation adjustments are recommended tonight, including a merit pay adjustment between 1.5 and 3% depending on performance, a 2% public safety supplemental pay adjustment that would be effective January 1st of 2017, that would be for sworn police and certified firefighters, a police retention adjustment targeted for officers and corporals with between five and 15 years of experience, a 3% market pay adjustment for all employees excluding sworn police and certified firefighters, an increase in the minimum hourly rate from $10.10 to actually, it's $11 per hour, a 2% contribution to a 401A defined contribution plan effective January 1st, 2017, an increase in the employee education reimbursement from $1,500 to $2,000 annually, and then finally, endorsement of the city moving ahead with a three-year classification and compensation study that would study one-third of the city positions each year, and also develop a strategy for achieving a $15 per hour minimum wage over five years. In the area of equipment replacement, the budget includes funding to replace over 200 vehicles and equipment, including police pursuit vehicles, hazmat truck and other fire apparatus, sanitation trucks, and other public works equipment. In terms of facility maintenance, the budget includes a one-time appropriation of general fund balance of $2.4 million to address about $1.1 million in major maintenance needs in our recreation and parks facilities, also to complete our new fiber optic network, and increase the subsidy for the Benton Convention Center. That's part of the $2.4 million fund balance appropriation. There are two fees that are included in the proposed budget, a fee for an after-hour non-emergency inspections, and then a non-residential plan review fee for projects that are less than 4,000 square feet. The budget also reflects fee increases that were approved by the City-City Utility Commission, including rate increases for water and sewer service and for tipping fees at our landfill facilities. In terms of the recommended changes that were approved by the Finance Committee, those include an increase in the minimum hourly rate from $10.40 to $11 per hour, the implementation of an aggressive police recruitment program that would cost $310,000, that would include a series of bonuses, additional scholarships, more focused recruitment efforts, the inclusion of contingency funding for additional grants for the Successful Outcomes After Release Program, an increase in the expense allowance for elected officials by $200 per month that would go into effect January 1st, 2017. This allowance increase would be optional, an increase in the proposed grant to the Urban League Summer Youth Employment Program from $125,000 to $175,000. And to offset those increases, there are some adjustments both on the expenditure side and on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we've eliminated the 4th Police District, which included five positions, the elimination of three positions in Recreation and Parks for pool operations, the elimination of one proposed Public Safety Information Systems Analyst, and then redirection of part of the general fund contingency, and the elimination of a proposed Human Resources Analyst position for in-house employee training, and then a half-a-year funding for facility maintenance positions, so those positions will not be filled until mid-year. So altogether, there's a net increase in expenditures of $252,930. On the revenue side, that additional increase is funded by an increase in our sales tax estimate based on the estimates we receive from the state about the expansion of the sales tax base, as well as our gross receipts tax on vehicle leases, almost $149,000 there, an increase in our estimate for utility franchise tax for communication services, again based on projections we receive from the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and then finally, a use of Housing Finance Assistance Fund Balance to cover the increased grant to the Urban League's Summer Youth Employment Program. Finally, just wanted to end with this slide. The proposed budget does include a two-cent tax increase and water and sewer fee increases. We've done, we've updated our survey of what the other cities, large cities in the state are proposing for fiscal year 2016, '17, and as you can see there, that we, based on the median home value for a Winston-Salem resident and consumption, average consumption in the city, that Winston-Salem would be the lowest-cost service provider among the five large cities in the state. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Rao? Thank you, Mr. Rao. Councilmembers, without objection, since this budget contains so much relative to police compensation and retention, and in that sense, we've all seen the number of homicides that have occurred, Councilmember Taylor with Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I would thought it might be good to ask Chief Roundtree just to make a comment regarding this budget and the potential impact on his ability to provide the protection for our community and whether or not I might want to comment on the increase in these number of homicides. Chief Roundtree?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council.
Good evening.
I'll speak to the first part of, your first comment first concerning the number of homicides that we've had up to this point in 2016. We are concerned, as well as you are concerned, and many of our citizens are concerned with the number of homicides that we've had up to this point. It is a little unusual at this point for us to have the number that we have. We have 14 at this point compared to six that we had last year at this time. As you are aware, cities across the country have seen a spike in violent crime, in Part I crime in particular, meaning homicides, rape robberies, burglaries, and aggravated assaults. We haven't seen some of the double digits increases that some of the other cities have seen in some of the other Part I crimes. We do feel that the homicides that we've had here in Winston-Salem are isolated incidents. These homicides are not random acts. We have proven that the victims and the suspects have had some type of connection, whether it's been a friendship, some type of domestic relationship, and so forth. There are no random killers running around, you know. It's not like the DC sniper situation where you have people just being shot at random. We haven't seen where these homicides are a result of any type of gang activity, and we haven't seen where people are just robbing and killing just because they're not employed. Again, these are not isolated, well, these are isolated incidents, and there is a connection between the victim and the suspects. Primarily, these homicides that we've experienced in 2016 have been a result of individuals choosing to settle a dispute with a firearm or some other type weapon. We have seen that the individuals seem to have a willingness to want to settle their disputes with a firearm, and there also seems to be an acceptance of violence, and people generally just don't value life. There's also an assumption and also expectation for law enforcement to be to predict when someone is going to get mad at a party, when someone is going to get mad at a card game, or whatever it may be, and we are expected to be able to present or predict when a homicide is going to occur. And as you are aware, homicides are almost impossible to predict because they are crimes of passion, where someone is mad at another individual, and they choose to use a firearm. In most cases that we've seen this year, we've had 10 that involve firearms. We've had one that involved a knife. We had one that involved a personal weapon where individual was actually choked, and we had one homicide that involved a vehicle, a vehicle where individual intentionally ran over another individual after a drug transaction. I do want to stress to our community that we will not tolerate these types of acts of violence. We're using all our resources that we have available at our disposal, whether it's on a local level, state, or federal level, to address these issues. We're also implementing some additional resources that are out on patrol. Again, it's hard to predict, but we are putting more officers out on patrol. And as you are aware, just with the sheer number of overtime, with the sheer number of homicides, our detectives are working overtime. They're working overtime to make sure that they can solve these cases, but we still need the public's input. We need the public's help to help us solve these cases. As I mentioned in one of my press conferences about three weeks ago, we may have several individuals who may be aware of what's going on, but they very seldom come forward to tell us who may be involved in some of these cases. And in one case in particular, that also involved family members who refused to come forward and were present at the time that the incident occurred. So we are working to address these issues. This is a city issue. It's not necessarily an issue just for the police department, but it is a concern of us. It should be a concern of all citizens in Winston-Salem. So I just urge all citizens to do what they can to spread the word and also encourage individuals not to be so quick to choose to use a firearm to settle a dispute.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions to Chief, Councilmember Taylor, as Public Safety Chair? Do you have any questions or comments?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, first of all, Chief, thank you for your comments. In addition to what the chief and the police department has going on, the city, and also, there's a grassroots effort to decrease violence and promote community progress. Most of you are aware that there was a community roundtable discussion to talk about ways we could decrease that violence and promote that progress. So May 31st, I'm happy to say that out of that meeting, you know, we've got an additional $50,000 put into the budget to promote summer employment, and also to work with the sewer program, Successful Outcomes After Release Program, to make sure we're supporting youth programs and youth groups, to make sure our kids are off the streets and doing something positive. So I think there is a collaborative effort to reduce crime in this community. It's not just the youth, but Frederick Douglass said that it's easier to build strong children than it is to repair broken men, and we're working on building those strong children. This budget helps us to do that. So thanks to Chief and to the department for what you're doing to reduce some of the crime in our communities, and it is a collaborative effort. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I was in communication with the city manager, and I said it doesn't matter how good a police chief may be or a police may be. When we have the kinds of things that are happening in this city, it does alarm the citizens, how safe is this city? And we know that when people sometimes kill each other, they are people who know each other, and that they do get angry. I did say to him that we can easily talk about what we need to be doing, and we need to show what we can do. We have different types of camps and activities that young children can participate with, and I think that we can do whatever we can to get them into the camps, keep them away from certain kinds of things that will be harmful or they will be influenced. I have been in communication with the U.S. Department of Justice. I have sent the kinds of initiatives that we have been doing in this city. Keep in mind, I did serve many years as Chairman of Public Safety, and we initiated so many things that the alderman and the council, and I talked about our initiatives, and this came from an Assistant Attorney General who encouraged, and I'm going to give you this letter, Chief Roundtree, so that you can start a communication with U.S. Attorney Mitch, because what we have done in this city through the years, we have also been used as an example, because we've been one of the first cities to do some things, and people have used us as a model. So I would like for us to step forward. As you said, you're not going to tolerate it, and you have to let these people know that we are not going to tolerate it, that there will be things and actions will be taken, but as I said to the city manager, we have a lot of people with some mental health problems, and we have people with emotional problems, and we have people who are unemployed, and when you have underemployed and no employment, it helps to create problems. So I would encourage you and your staff to do everything that you can do to ease the minds of our citizens.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Chief, I don't sit on the public sector, so you may have already given this information, but I'd appreciate some type of statistical information on who the victims are and who the culprits are, you know, age demographics, maybe reason is, was it domestic violence? Was it a drug deal or whatever? Just anything that can help me get around the issue, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, we have that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I don't know, if I touched on the second part of your question, was related to the budget and the recruiting efforts, as you can imagine, not only here in Winston-Salem but across the country, it's becoming very difficult to attract people into the law enforcement profession. With all the scrutiny on law enforcement, you have a lot of young individuals, specifically those coming out of college, that choose not to enter into the law enforcement profession now. Across the state, there's been about 10 basic law enforcement training academies that has been canceled just because of the lack of participation. Combining that with the scrutiny and the general pay, you know, not necessarily Winston-Salem but across the state, it's just hard to attract individuals now that want to be police officers.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much. All right, we'll go forward with our public hearing now. First person is Linda Davis, excuse me, Linda Lewis. Again, if you'd state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Linda Lewis. Address 512 Surrey Path Trail here in Winston-Salem. Mayor Joins, members of the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here representing the Shepherd Center of Greater Winston-Salem. We have requested funding from the city for the first time this year to support programs and services for older adults, and I've just come as the Associate Executive Director of that organization briefly to say that we are seeing our needs increasing as our older adult population increases. One of our programs specifically serves those who are primarily under 200% poverty level. Most of those we serve are older women, about 80%, and through this particular program, we have volunteers who provide transportation, minor home repairs, caregiver support, other supports to help older adults who are struggling just to remain independent and to have their needs met. Rather than for me to go on about that program, I would like for you to hear from two ladies who came with me tonight who have benefited from these services, and so I would invite you to hear Ms. Burrell and Ms. Smith.
Ms. Carolyn Burrell?
My name is Carolyn Burrell. I live at 269 Elm Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and I would like to express to the commission and Mayor Jones and all the workers here that I have benefited from the Shepherd Center. They come out, they'll fix leaks from your faucet, they'll build ramps for you, they build steps where your steps are too high. They are really good. I know that they deliver meals on wheels. They, of course, I don't get meals on wheels, but I could use it. They will carry people to the doctor. They are good service, and I'd like for everyone here to know that they do a lot of work for older people. I'm a widow, and there are many other widows I know in my neighborhood who get help, and they are doing a good job, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Burrell. Councilmember Burke?
Yeah, Ms. Burrell is a retired teacher, and what I'm going to say, the folks who are talking about the elderly, we also know that elderly are being abused more than ever also, and if you have people who are retired, and there are some on income less than what retired teachers are getting from their retirement, so you can see the need.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Arthas Smith? Good evening.
I am Arthas Smith, 3031 Butterfield Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27105. Good evening again, Mayor, and to the city council. I stand here before you this afternoon to encourage you that as you think about your fiscal year 2016, '17 budget, that you consider the Shepherd Center funding. I have benefited from the Shepherd Center greatly. They have done plumbing for me, built a ramp for me, stained the ramp, and they have also repaired a utility shed that I had, that I have, and put a double door up on it, and believe it or not, they even barricaded some groundhog's that were going up under my shed that I was running for dear life from. So they have been my shed that I was running for dear life from. So, they have been very beneficial to me. They have put up two storm windows, replaced two storm windows. They have put up four shut, four pairs of shutters on my home. So, it has really made a difference to me. I am a retired state employee on a fixed income, and it has really made a difference in my income. Some things that they have done might be still not done, like my shed, and the groundhog could be still running up under my shed. So, I really, really, really do appreciate the Shepherd Center, and I think they are doing a great work for the community, for seniors, and for myself as well as others. So, as, again, as you think about your funding to the Shepherd Center, that they will be considered. The staff is courteous, they don't put you on hold, you get to talk to a real person, and...
Ms. Smith, your time is up. If you want to summarize this a little bit, that'd be fine.
No, that's good. I thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Gali Hassan?
Good evening, Mayor, and city council. Gali Hassan at 5116 Brick Road, Winston-Salem, 27105. I would just like to say tonight, and while you consider in this budget, that when you look at the city and county spending, it's almost a billion dollars. And if 10% of that was going through our community, the minority communities of the city, maybe we wouldn't have so many murders and people fighting and killing each other over niggas and dimes. But my request tonight is that if you would consider placing federal Form 1273 in our instructions to bidders, that would increase hiring, local hiring on these contracts, that companies are coming in from New York, Florida, from wherever, and they're not hiring people who live here. If you were to put that federal Form 1273 into the instructions to bidders, though your instructions presently makes mention to you must follow all state, local, and federal laws, but this Form 1273 breaks it out very clearly wherein the contractor has an obligation to have only job training on these projects, wherein the contractor can't say, "I can't find anybody to do the work," or "It's not enough minority contractors," or whatever the case. We need jobs. And if you look, I'll give you just a good example, and I'll shut up. The Salem Connector here on 52, that company, Black Construction, started on East 25th Street exit, right in the heart of the black community. But they don't have one black person that lives in Winston-Salem on the project, no black women, or no women, period. If you were to include this Form 1273 into the instructions to bidders on all public projects, it would help and create local preference for hiring and only job training, which is desperately needed in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan.
Thank you.
Clement Little?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Mayor Jones and Mayor Protem, Ms. Burke and the council members, we're here just to thank you for the financial support we've received over the years. My address is 1724100 Woods, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. And I'm the president of Liberty East Redevelopment, and along with Mr. Isaiah Black, who's an advisory board member and a digital consultant, and President Yemitriz, Ms. Naomi Jones. And we're just here to, just wanna thank you. First of all, those that are not familiar with LARA, LARA is about promoting and aiding and enhancing neighborhood growth and revitalization in the East Winston community. And we, right now, conduct a host of projects, host of community activities. Number one is the digital connectors. And what we do there is help children between ages 14, 21, to learn computers, whether it's a software, a hardware, and also we do teach them how to do budgets and write checks, just, just the simple skills of life. The other program that we conduct is the Kids Cafe, and that's an after-school program where, that we feed the kids in the community. We make sure that they get a good meal in the evening. And also, we do the after-school care, that's in conjunction with the YMCA, and where the kids get the opportunity to get tutored and mentored after school. Next, a new project that we all are part of now is called the Place Matters for the United Way. And in that project, we are in collaboration with ESR and Habitat for Humanity. And what we're doing there is providing tax services to helping people prepare the taxes, and also to build new homes. Right now, I think we've got about five lots, and we're in the process of building in fiscal year of 2016-17, five new homes in the area, and also do some revitalization. So, again, we've done quite a few things, and we just thank you for your support.
That's all. Ms. Jones, Mr. Black, would you like to make comments?
No, I'm, I'm just, you know, here to collaborate on what he's saying, but I don't have to say anything.
Mr. Black?
No, I'm just here as, as in support of Liberty East Redevelopment and the work that's going on in the area. Of course, I've been in that area a long time, and we're at a point now where I feel like we're making a very serious impact in that area, being one of the lead agencies. Liberty East Redevelopment is a lead agency that was chosen by the United Way. And they kind of put their money where their mouth was, and so they're supporting us, and we got a lot of things that we're getting ready to do, as Mr. Little has stated. I just appreciate the support.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Ms. Jones, Ms. Will, Customer Burke?
I'm gonna say something while they're standing there. Ms. Jones, retired teacher, has given so many years to LARA. And Mr. Black, a retired probational officer, has given so many years. And Mr. Clement Little, who's in real estate, still working every day. And what I wanna say is this, Fairchild was one of the worst areas we had in this community. We had a lot of crime, we had a lot of people and children not being mistreated. And I wanna commend the many hours that they volunteered, not only the three of them, but others who come in and volunteer and give their time to the children there. They did not tell you, but in the area, we have so many of them who are in college, and that's a plus. And we also have Mrs. Pam Peoples, who works with a group, we have a gang committee trying to make sure we don't have gangs, that we don't get these young children involved in things that are negative. And it's just something, when our citizens can volunteer and care about. Also, Mr. Brooks will tell you that LARA, some call it Lear, is that right, Mr. Page? I see Mr. Clement, but it is LARA, Liberty East Redevelopment Corporation. It is the longest, the oldest corporation we have in this city. And I believe that the taxpayers will know when children are being saved and families are being motivated to move farther, that it's worth the tax dollars.
And we got our corporation in 1987, we've incorporated, and our nonprofit status.
Long, long history.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Ms. Jones can talk louder than that.
She sings, too.
Are you frightening all these people?
Oh, no. I used to teach a whole lot of kids.
I'm teasing you, Ms. Jones, my dear friend.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Natasha Gore?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Jones, Mayor Protem, council members, I'm Natasha Gore, 3315 Victoria Park Lane, 27103. I am a volunteer representative of the Arts Council of Forsyth County this evening, and I am an amateur artist, which just means I don't get paid. I wanted to thank you all for your support of the Arts Council. Because of your support, services have been able to be offered to over half a million people. Over 43,000 of those are children. It's created 137 million in economic impact, over 4,700 jobs created, and about 13 and a half million in local and state tax revenue. So, just wanted to say thank you to you all. I'm sure you already know that your investment in the Arts Council makes a huge impact, and will help us embody our moniker of City of Arts and Innovation. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Gore. Julianne Allen?
Jo Allen, 284, that's P.O. Box 284, 27102. I would just like to say, first of all, is that it must be great to live in a city that has as many problems as Winston-Salem. And as far as the budget, and I do mean the 2016 to 2017 budget, Ms. Burke, I heard you talk about the initiatives that's been set in place and everything, and how, you know, everything is so great and what have you. But the problem is this, if all these initiatives have worked over the years, then Winston-Salem would not be where it is today. And I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse. Winston-Salem would not be in the shape that it is today. And what I would like to say is that when we take a look at this budget, it's amazing. All these groups, and I commend Shepherd Center for all the good work they do, and any other nonprofit organization. But the problem that I have is that in the budget that you all do, because the budget do roll up as forth the directive, is that the information that's given to the public, you're not being exactly truthful when it comes to everything that the people of Winston-Salem need to know. If we can put money aside for economic development, if we can give close to $30 million to Mr. Bob Leek, who's the president and CEO of the Winston-Salem Business, Inc., to start up the Union Cross Business Park, and other individuals, although they only got $1 million back in 1997. And when I look at Winston-Salem, that was $1 million, Mr. Clark, from the city, and $1 million from the county. And when I look at your actions and your reactions to Winston-Salem, I have a problem, because Winston-Salem didn't get like this overnight. It took time. And Mayor Jones, as well as Mayor Protem, Ms. Burke, you all have been around longer than anyone. And the problem is, is that everything that you all have done, we might as well, we're on our way to being number one in the country for having more poor people living in poverty. And let me just correct something. That goes back to the fact with the Brookings Institute. There was an issue last, meeting last month. So, let's just be perfectly clear, Winston-Salem is not okay. If the initiative worked, we wouldn't be here today. We need to do more for the people of Winston-Salem, and not for our friends. Thank you.
Jerry Romans?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jerry Romans, 401 North Main Street, Winston-Salem. Mayor Jones, Madam Protem Burke, Councilwoman Adams, and distinguished city council members, I have the privilege to chair the Board of Directors for Experiment in Self-Reliance. On behalf of the ESR staff and full board, we want to thank you for your support and investment in ESR. We very much appreciate the support of this council, the city of Winston-Salem, and the dedicated city employees we work so closely with on a daily basis. ESR's mission is to empower the working low-income and chronically homeless individuals and families to achieve their full potential for long-term social and economic self-reliance. And the city's support and partnership is vital in our ability to deliver on this mission. Resources provided by the city support ESR's Housing Services Program, designed to provide a pathway to the chronically homeless, and obtain stable housing accommodations that address the social and economic factors necessary to maintain stable housing. The philosophy of the program, Housing First, which means, which maintains that once a household has a roof, other needs can be more efficiently met. In ESR's most recent fiscal year, 96% of participants in our housing program successfully obtained stable housing. The city also supports the Forsyth Free Tax Program, of which ESR is the lead agency in collaboration with sister agencies in the community. Highlights of this program for the tax year 2014 were over 4,000 tax returns processed free of charge, saving tax filers over $1 million in preparation fees, total refunds exceeding $4 million. The Earned Income Tax Credit Program is the federal government's largest anti-poverty program, and according to federal stats, 20% of those eligible for the Earned Income Tax Credit fail to claim it on their taxes. The Forsyth Free Tax Program ensures all who are eligible to receive this credit receive it, which in 2015 exceeded $2 million, thus averting potential economic loss of $400,000 in our community. ESR's New Century IDA Program is designed to combat asset poverty through education and the ability to receive matching funds and savings that are used to buy a new home, start a business, or pay for an education. Home ownership is the key element to strengthening our communities and growing our tax base. And since the inception of this program in 1999, over 545 IDA graduates have accumulated over $54 million in taxable assets. ESR also receives support from the city to provide emergency services, to provide furnished housing accommodations to families and individuals in need of crisis, in need during a time of crisis. ESR is proud to have served the Winston-Salem community for more than 51 years, and is dedicated to improving its services and meeting the needs of our community, and innovating to meet the challenges of evolving societal needs.
Mr. Romans, could you summarize your time, sir?
Yes. Thank you for your continued support, partnership, and investment, and I appreciate my time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romans. That's all the individuals who had signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard relative to the budget? Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council, everybody present, USF SLS, P.O. Box 17506, 27116. I would like most of you to take time to realize the Latin that's in the insignia up above you, Urbis Candita Aduivando, which means a city based on cooperation. And that cooperation has a relationship between the people and you all who sat up on the panel. That relationship forms a bond with the people, because the power is vested solely in the people. In relation to the budget and how it relates, I would just take a quote from Mr. Montgomery, from his meeting that he had a couple of weeks ago about how we need to bring facts with things that we talk about. And part of the budget, you know, it spoke about allocating in the page chart money for a healthy environment. And my point was, and still stands, that a lot of this information that's being given is going over the people's heads. It's not being broken down in layman's terms for them to understand how bonds are created, how bonds help them and should help them, how the bond should support recreational centers being open for the youth on the weekends, how the bond should support free summer camps for the youth during operational hours, because we're talking about the youth. And the city cannot change if we're not gearing anything towards the youth in a real-life fashion. When we talk about a healthy environment, as I stated before, when I looked at the chart, again, we're talking about a bond between the people and elected officials. But somewhere in that chart, there seems to be a breach, a breach of fiduciary duty to the people. And the breach is, we cannot talk about having a healthy environment when there's mold throughout the city. the city because the city right now is just releasing her burdens. This is what we're seeing. We can't continue to cover up and patch up and make, again, parks look pretty. What's happened in the Rolling Hills, that's just one instance, not just one place, but we're talking about sewage backed up. We make Flint, Michigan, look like a joke. We're talking about mold throughout the city, even at our rec centers, and as I look on some of this information right here, you have amended ordinances, all type of amended ordinances, but there has not been an amended ordinance for mold and to make landlords be responsible for it, even the city. So again, there's a breach. There's a breach somewhere along the elected officials and the people because the power is invested within the people.
Could you summarize, please, your time?
Yes, sir, I will. I would dare say that the programs that have been very useful in the community to keep it going, but there has to be a realignment of that physical budget to where as it can benefit the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. Mr. Kenny? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor, City Council, Gerald Green, Holman Ministries. First, I want to thank the city for your continued support of Holman Ministries and our Homes for Heroes project. We requested extra funding to continue to help alleviate the chronic homelessness among veteran and other homeless personnel. We go out into the community. We find the veterans that can't make it to an agency to get their health. Some of these people are mentally incapable of knowing what they need, or, so we go out, find them, sometimes some of the places I've seen are dilapidated and the circumstance which they live in are unbelievable, but we need funding to continue to do that. These agencies that provide help to the homeless and homeless veterans, they're great when the individuals make it there, but we facilitate them making it there. We go into the community. We've recently got several veterans out of Greensboro, they've contacted us, and they are now living in our program. I've met with the city council there, they want to model after us, so we're doing something right, but we need more funding, and I would kindly ask the council to reconsider the proposed budget for Holman Ministries.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to be heard on the budget? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latika Crawford. I live in the East Ward, and I'm here on behalf of Hoops for Life, a program ran by Ms. Brittany Ward here. Both of my children attend, and I would like to express the need for funding so that her program can continue, can continue and also be available to children at the recreation centers on the weekend. I attended the meeting that we had on the 31st, nice to see that everyone could make it today in reference to the violence in our neighborhoods, and all of this is a problem that, as she said, did not occur overnight, but it's a compound of problems, and when we can get funding to programs such as Hoops for Life and a lot of the programs that they have here today, it does counteract the violence. It does bring the youth up, it does teach them to have respect and dignity and to carry themselves in a manner that they're not stereotyped, they do not end up in the prison system. But however, not only, it's not only important for the children, but we also have to look at the parents. A lot of the parents, now, I do work, I work full-time, I make molding for Michaels through Carolina Art and Frame, however, I'm overeducated and underemployed. I make it, but I live paycheck to paycheck, which I should not, but I also live in a neighborhood that's dilapidated and neglected and has been done so for decades. No one has invested in the African-American community the way that it should have been. I lived on the west side, as I stated before, previously, and I watched this side of town be built from dirt roads to a multimillion-dollar plaza where you have tax revenue now coming in, jobs available for their children. These things are not coming to our communities and programs. More programs are needed, we need jobs, and we need more economic development plans in the budget, not just for the rich to continue to get rich here in Winston-Salem, while the poor, we grovel. The landlords can take us to court, but no one hold them, I'm sorry, holds them accountable to fix the property, but they continue to collect money. Some of these properties receive Section Eight, and while this is maybe a meeting for health and safety, the health and safety of African-Americans has been at the bottom of the barrel for decades. I'm twenty-nine years old, I've never left this city. My great-grandfather put his roots here, the Civic League. If you go in Bellevue Recreation Center now, it looks the same way it did when I was seven years old. The computers made back in the nineties. The kitchen area has never been renovated, but we have two-point-five million in the budget this year for recreation. I would like to see those funds allocated properly and not to the friends and the family members or to whomever may have the networking and connection skills that they have that continues to build our west ward and leave the east ward in the dirt. So again, I'm here stating and telling you all that the violence will not end, and it won't only be in the African-American communities. If something is not done, it'll spill over into yours, the place where you all are afraid for it to come.
Could you summarize, please?
I will. We need more funding for these programs, we need economic plans and development, and we need businesses and jobs that hire people that look like me.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else want to hear on the budget? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing on the budget closed, and we'll go to item G2, please.
Item G2, ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Winston-Salem City Code relating to building regulations.
I would like to ask Councilwoman Clark, Chairman of Finance Committee.
Yeah, let me say first off, there are ten motions I'm gonna make tonight on the budget as we go through it, there's not a single motion, so if it seems confusing out there, it is, but let me just start with G2. I move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Winston-Salem City Code related to an after-hours non-emergency inspection fee and a planned review fee for commercial development under three thousand square feet for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016-17.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. I'll play the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you. Item G3.
Item G3, annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016-2017.
Councilwoman Clark.
I move to approve the annual appropriation and tax levy ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016-17, which sets the tax rate at fifty-eight-point-five cents per hundred of assessed tax value and a tax rate of nine cents per hundred of assessed value for property owners within the downtown Winston-Salem Business Improvement District.
Second.
Second, discussion. Councilwoman Clark.
While I made the motion, I am not voting for the budget for the first time in fifteen years, I cannot support it. I think we're trying to too, too much, too quick, and our priorities are wrong. We're adding thirty new positions, at the same time, we're trying to give market play adjustment, continue to spend our capital money, add two-hundred new vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. Like anyone else, I think we need to prioritize how we spend our money and where we spend our money, and I will say, Ms. Garrity, I'll meet with you privately to go over some of my particular points, but I think we're trying to do everything, and as a result, we don't do anything very well, and I think we need to prioritize it better than we did this year, and therefore, I will not be supporting, uh, G3. Thank you.
Councilwoman Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. This city council and Finance Chair Clark, what we have here is we've all, what we've seen over the years, like some of you have already said, this, well, we didn't get here like this overnight. You've heard the chief tell you about the police, the public safety situation, not just police, but firemen. We also have issues with our utilities employees, we have issues with our sanitation employees, we have issues with all of the pay, basically, to our employees because we have failed to keep pace with the market and the other cities probably for the past twenty-plus years. As they say, now is time for us to pay the piper. We have employees leaving us, being trained with your tax dollars. This budget, yeah, like someone already said earlier tonight, is an attempt to stop the bleeding and the floodgates. It's an attempt. It will take us another five, ten, maybe fifteen, twenty years to be able to catch up with all of the other cities in the state of North Carolina, some even smaller than us, that our police and fire and others, utility workers, inspectors are leaving to go to smaller cities because the pay is much better. I think the staff, along with this city council, we've done the best we can do with what we have to work with, but I always tell people, we have in the budget a lot of things that people take for granted. I was riding today, and I looked at our people picking up the sanitation, the garbage, you know, on the streets with our equipment that we use. People, I know a lot of you think that we try to fashion the budget where people can't understand it. Trust me, it takes more than a notion even for some of us to understand all of this. It's a business. It is a business, it's a big business. Four-hundred-and-forty-two, it's a big business, and we spend a lot of time deliberating over the decisions that we make when it comes to budget time. You could probably ask any council member on this panel, and they'll tell you, the time of year that we all kind of go, oh, it's budget time, because we have to make the tough decision, somebody has to make it. All we're saying is, and I hope you understand again, what we're doing is try to keep the quality of life intact for the citizens of Winston-Salem, and Mayor, I thank you for the time.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman McIntosh.
In a hundred-and-sixty-seven-page budget with multiple addendums that we spent time on, there's lots of details that have defined devils in. There are some things in this budget that I'm very proud of, very happy that we're stepping up to increase the pay of our firefighters and our policemen and also our city employees. Those are things that are long overdue and fulfill our commitment that we've made over the past couple of years to get that done, and I'm happy we'll be able to do that. I'm also happy that we are not, I asked city manager about this, we are not collecting money to pay positions that we will not fill in the course of this budget year, and I was under the assumption that we would, and I'm happy to hear that we are not doing that. On the downside, there are a lot of new bodies coming into, into the arena, and I feel like we may be overemphasizing bodies over, over technology. I know that may sound bad, but we often ask for a lot of data, and we have eliminated in this budget two analyst positions, so somebody's got to analyze and tell us what that data means once we get it. I think we do a good job of gathering it, but I think we need to stay on the ball in terms of deciphering that and figuring out how that gets played out and how we actually use that information. Greensboro just got on board with What Works Cities, which is a real feather in their cap. I wish we would have qualified for that, that's a, that's a very prestigious program that deals with big data and how it gets applied to city management. I'd like to, I'd like to be competitive with Greensboro with any city in the country. I think we can do it, but I think this budget does emphasize bodies over technology, and basically for those reasons, I am not going to be able to support this budget as well.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
When we look at a budget, former council member Wanda Marshall always said that making the budget was like making sausage in public. That it is a process in which it is a very dirty process, but at the end, you get something that you can eat, and oftentimes, the things that go into it, some things you like and some things you don't like, and at the end of the day, as a responsibility that we have is to be able to advocate for the areas and communities in which we represent, but at the same time, understand that we have an entire city that we have the responsibility to work for and engage with. As others, there are things in this budget that I'm happy that we're working towards, and then there are areas in which I believe that the budget falls short. I think there were comments that were made tonight that I agree full-hearted and wholeheartedly with, and particularly in terms of how we look at our investment in community, and some communities take the perspective in terms of how we make our investments and shift those investments to the communities and the areas that are in the end most needed in terms of how we invest dollars, and I think that that is a strategy and a method, particularly in some of which Charlotte has used and which they've used their bond dollars and examined the areas that have the highest need, and they target those communities in which they infuse their dollars because of the understanding of the impact it has, and that's an item that I think that we should reevaluate and take a look at. But one thing I think that is important to this community and to this council has been in terms of how we look at our employment and how we look at taking care of those individuals that take care of citizens each and every day. I believe and have advocated for, and I advocated earlier this year and stated that I would bring it to this council and did bring so through Finance Committee in terms of advocating for a fifteen-dollar base minimum wage. We're not there, but moving from the recommendation from starting at ten dollars and ten cent, then the recommendation in the budget to ten dollars and forty cent, but what we have here today as an eleven-dollar minimum wage, I don't believe that as a city we can talk about dealing with issues of poverty if we don't take the first steps. I think that if you're gonna talk about it, then you have to be about it and be an example to others in community to do that, and I think we have a long way to go in order to continue to move in that direction, but the strategy that's in this budget to move, to look at examining how we can move to fifteen dollars a year, I think is something that we need to continue to look at. As well, one of the things I requested in this was in terms, as we look at the challenge in our community around the summer youth employment program at the Urban League, I believe that the more opportunities that we have to get our young people engaged with employment and job opportunities in the summer, where oftentimes, left-to-owned devices may end up in certain issues and trouble, we have to make a targeted effort to be able to do that, and that's one additional things we do here in this budget. But I think that there are many, many other areas that we need to continue to improve upon, and it's one of those things that you, you're, it's a slippery slope. If you do nothing, you're criticized, if you do something, you're criticized in doing it, but at the end of the day, we have to make sure that individuals who work for the city of Winston-Salem are compensated for the work that they do, and as is stated, this didn't happen overnight, and it's not gonna be a transition that is repaired overnight, but I believe that these are steps in the right directions. Are there more steps to be made? Yes, there are. Should those steps be made and how those steps are to be made, I think are still left to be determined, and I think that it will include and is necessary for the entire community to be engaged in that process with their elected officials and with this council, and so I look forward to the conversations and dialogues of those individuals who desire to be engaged in that process.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bessie.
It's important to take this year's budget in the context of the last several years, what we've been trying to do. Winston-Salem has, as most of the country, has gone through a period of difficult economic times, and the past couple of years, we've been pulling out of that, working to recover. Last year, we spent a lot of attention on the capital needs of the city, deferred maintenance and increase in investments to our transportation, our public safety, our recreation and parks, air economic and housing development around the city through the bond referendum that was passed in the fall of 2014 and funding that and getting that underway last year. This year, the central item that we've turned attention to is the problem of our staff salaries and the way they've been lagging behind our competitors. You know, if you look at the fact that we have a four-hundred-and-fifty-million roughly-dollar budget, you think, eh, that's a lot of money, and it is, but the reality is that from year to year, when you've got a basically sound economic city as Winston-Salem is, triple-A bond rating and still the lowest combined taxes and fees on average of any major city in North Carolina, what we deal with each year is a fraction of the total budget. What we're focusing on this year in the changes, and the key change, is a significant investment in salary increases for city employees, recognizing and responding to the fact that a great many of our staff are underpaid compared to those in other peer cities in North Carolina. And as a major part of that response, we're continuing our efforts this year to bring our police officers and firefighters up to competitive pay and benefits levels. That's not just the right thing to do for those who protect our community, it's also smart policy for getting the best public safety service for our citizens. We cannot afford to keep training good officers just to lose them to other cities who pay them a little closer to what they deserve. We're also increasing the pay to other hard-working city employees, including especially underpaid categories like our sanitation collection staff, and for anybody who thinks those men and women don't deserve a raise, I invite you to try their jobs for a few days. Now, as usual, in a year when we have to raise the property tax rate to cover city salary increases, I'm uncomfortable in accepting an increase myself, so even though the amount is small, in fact trivial compared to the whole budget, it feels too much like raising taxes to pay myself more, so I will not accept any increase in salary or expenses for this fiscal year. There are other important changes to this year's budget. For example, we are funding an additional fire inspector to improve the quality of business inspection and commercial fire inspections as a prior fire prevention measure and to take that duty out of our fire operations companies to improve their efficiency as well. We're also adding three additional fire safety and training officers. These are needed positions for the safety of our community. We're adding two more crime data analysts to assist in investigations and to identify and address trends to help shape our response and deploy our resources to catch criminals, discourage crime, and improve community safety. We're adding an enhanced litter cleanup services along public right-of-way to make our city a more attractive and livable place to live, and these are merely some examples of what we're doing. Now, like some of my other colleagues, I'm not personally comfortable with the fact that we're having to increase the property tax rate by two cents in order to pay- that we're having to increase the property tax rate by two cents in order to pay for this year's budget. But you see, that's the difference between the city council and Congress. We can't just print money, and we don't think voters are dumb enough to believe in a free lunch. So we're going to tell you what we're doing, what it costs, why we're doing it, and how we're paying for it. We hope that you'll agree that it's the right set of choices, and in any case, we'll have told you the truth and done our best to meet your needs.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Burke.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. People have asked me if I was going to vote for this budget, and I said I will be thinking about it, and when I get to the meeting, you will find out. I appreciate when citizens come down and voice their concerns about what we ought to be doing and what we're not doing. I would say to the mayor and members of the council, I know we have a finance committee, but I believe that what the city manager needs to do for future is to appoint a committee, which you do have people that look at the budget when it comes to the agency, but you need to appoint a committee and listen to the criticism we've had and see how we can move beyond that. If you will look at this city to see where we were and what businesses we had, and then we lost these businesses, to see where we've come from. We have done things. I've told the mayor one thing he needs to be more forward in saying, in this city, we have done a tremendous job. We could have been in a bad shape had businesses not stepped up and had businesses not come to this city. If I were to criticize what I have seen, we have not gotten enough of our city residents who pay taxes into jobs, opportunities, and our workforce has not been as diverse as I feel that it should be with minorities and women in positions. Also, when the grantee agencies come before us each and every year, we give. I don't believe that we have shown the residents, when we do give to these agencies, how much they give back. It's not just like giving and we not receiving. It makes a tremendous economic impact, and I would hope the information that I asked Mr. Ral to give me, that we put this in libraries and into the various places that people need to see. I am the first one from day one, if you go back and you look at the minutes in the history of this city, that we don't run this city like a business. If you, if these bankers we have in here, these businessmen and women we have in here, if we did that, they'd fire us. That is right. They would fire us, and there's no doubt about it. Because I had an example that I want to say, I want to say something about something. I asked them to show me when we developed a technologist center, the Donald Marshall, we gave them a five-hundred-and-twenty-some-thousand dollars. Is that right, Mr. Page? And they left, and we had to write off four-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars. Banks don't operate like that in businesses. We need to improve how we do business. And when I look at the employees, it is difficult. And we've had a chairman been sitting right up here, he's the finance chairman, and he could have offered us some kind of more concrete types of examples on what we ought to be doing. We come here tonight, and we talk about a budget, and we have employees who's been sitting, wondering. The morale has been good. When I talked to this city manager, how is the morale of the employees, knowing that fire and police are going to do some things for them and some other folks, but not as much for some of the other employees? And he said, it's working pretty good. But you can only expect for them to maintain their calmness and their acceptance. And I will say to you, as I say to the person who makes the highest salary in this city, I'm not talking about in the city of Winston-Salem, but I mean the person who's in this city, our executives I'm talking about, they make money. But the loaf of bread for the person who makes their lowest salary costs the same amount of money. And I do not believe that we have been, some of us, as sensitive in this city, some of the companies we have in this city who can do a better job. And I would say also, Mr. City Manager, these grantee agencies and everybody that we give money, the taxpayers, I want to see how diverse they are. I'm going to say it again. And I want to, it's something, when you go in places and you see people that we give money, tax dollars, and they're in some of your clubs, having lunch and enjoying themselves, and then poor taxpayers can hardly pay insurances for their cars and for their homes and keep their homes fixed. And to our employees, this is a tough call for some of us to make this evening.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've always been a proponent of the adage that you get what you pay for and you keep what you pay for. We have been in a situation where we are bleeding valuable employees that we have trained. So I am very much in support of the increase in our tax rate. I would have had it probably even higher, but I am so very, very proud of the fact that this budget does increase the lowest level pay to eleven dollars an hour. That doesn't sound like, you know, a big deal, from ten to eleven dollars an hour, but the fact is, it's going to make a whole lot of difference to those people who are going to get the extra almost couple of thousand dollars a year. So I'm very, very pleased for that and for our other employees that are going to be paid market rate or closer to market rate. We still haven't made it that far. Another thing I would like to point out is that our grantee agencies that we support add more to the quality of life, the safety of our citizens, the service to the elderly, all of those things. So I don't think you can give enough to some of the grantee agencies. I wish we had the ability to give more, and maybe in the future we will. One comment Mr. McIntosh made about bodies versus technology. Yeah, I think maybe in the future, that's a road we will travel, and I think we have the basis for that sort of thing because we have award-winning information services. Do I say that right? Or technologic services or whatever. So I think, I think that the future, that is going to be a part of the future. But for now, I will vote for this budget because I am so pleased with the fact that the salaries are getting more equitable. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly, my colleagues have said a lot on the budget, and I agree with those comments you've been, you've made. I'm very excited about moving our minimum wage to eleven dollars an hour. We're setting a good example for the other businesses and organizations in our city as we continue to work on our poverty initiatives. This will be a great example as we continue to move that way. I'm particularly encouraged and excited about the city manager's recommendations vis a the police retention and police, aggressive police recruitment. If we don't give Chief Roundtree the officers he needs out there, if we can have all the budget in the world, he's got to be able to keep them. Right now, we have authorized strength of five-hundred-and-seventy police officers, sworn officers. Based on where we're at right now, by in June, we'll be twelve short of that, and based on the attrition rate that we've had in the past, if it continues the way it's been, by February, we'll be down forty-one officers. So we've got to stop that from happening and keep our officers here. I'm also very pleased that we added an additional fifty thousand dollars this year to the SOAR program. Mr. Taylor's a great program there, and we're excited about that, as well as we've added fifty thousand dollars to our summer youth program. Someone else mentioned that. We're up to one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, and I agree, giving our youth good, solid employment during the summers gives them great work experience as well as gives them some resources as well. We've had to have some new positions because with the number of bonds that we've approved and the many facilities we've had, the additional maintenance that we have, we're going to take care of those. Councilmember Burke continues to talk about take care of your investment there, so that's what we're doing. But also, we still are, have the highest credit rating of all the major credit rating agencies in the country, and we have the lowest taxes and fees. So I think this is a solid budget that starts addressing those issues, and I'm pleased to support it myself. So we have a motion to approve the budget. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
No.
Here are two noes. The motion passes six to two, with Councilmember McIntosh and Councilmember Clark voting in.
May I just step out one minute?
Yes, sir. Go ahead. So we'll have now item G four, please.
Item G four, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Councilmember Clark did have to step out. He has an emergency. I'm going to invite our vice chairman to...
Thank you. Mayor, members of the city council moved to approve the project budget ordinance. Are we on four or five?
Yes, four.
Moved to approve the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Sir, second.
Second.
In discussion. On further motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.
No.
Excuse me. No. Okay, Councilmember McIntosh votes no. Motion passes six to one. Councilmember, well, actually, the...
A yes vote.
Councilmember Clark, we're voting on item G four. With your out of the room, you'd be counted as a yes unless you want to vote no.
No, that's fine.
You're okay. So the motion passes seven to one then. That's right. Thank you. Now, item G five.
Item G five, project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016, 2017, for federal housing funds and housing finance assistance fund.
We need to excuse Councilmember Montgomery for voting on this item, and I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second to excuse Councilmember Montgomery. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Councilmember Montgomery, excused. Councilmember Clark?
I move to approve the federal housing and housing finance assistance funds project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina for the fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item six.
Item G six, resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal years 2016, 2017 through 2021, 2022 as a financial planning guide.
Councilmember Clark?
Move to approve a resolution approving the capital plan for fiscal year 2016, 2017 through 2021, 22 as a financial planning guide.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Montgomery?
Just a comment on this area and to the city manager in reference to some of the concerns that were brought up in reference to recreation centers. I know I have addressed to you some thoughts and concerns specific to a couple of areas in the east ward, but do note that for the public, this is the area in which addresses and outlines the future investments in different parts of our community, so this is one of the areas for community to pay attention to.
Thank you very much. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That is unanimous. Item seven.
Item G seven, resolution amending the personnel resolution of the city of Winston-Salem, making changes to the pay plan and other policies in supporting a three-year market study of all city position classifications.
Councilmember Clark?
I move to approve a resolution amending the personnel resolution of the city of Winston-Salem, making changes to the pay plan and other policies in supporting a three-year market study of all city position classifications.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item eight.
Item G eight, resolution approving a cost of living adjustment for the city of Winston-Salem police officers retirement system for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Councilmember Clark?
Move to approve a resolution for a cost of living adjustments for the city of Winston-Salem police officers retirement system for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine.
Item G nine, resolution authorizing an amendment to the city-county cooperative governmental services funding agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for consolidated city-county forensic services unit.
Councilmember Clark?
Move to approve a resolution authorizing an amendment to the city-county cooperative government services funding arrangement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for consolidated city-county forensic servicing unit as recommended by the finance committee and public safety committee.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Clark?
I will just mention, oftentimes we get questions, why don't the city and the county do more things together? And this is what we're doing here. We're combining our forensic department, that's the folks that go out and investigate crime scenes, things of that sort. So we're combining the city and the county there, and jointly, there will be some consolidated savings.
Very good. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Item ten.
Item G ten, resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for grant funds to support the district attorney's domestic violence unit.
Councilmember Clark?
Move to approve a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County for grant funds to support the district attorney's domestic violence unit.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Taylor?
If we can just get information, as we've asked for from other grantee agencies on how the program's going, the number of people that are serving, and the success of the program, it'd be good for us to know.
Very good. Thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. That concludes the discussion and actions on this year's budget. We will now consider the balance of the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items. We have an item related to the submission of a choice neighborhood planning grant, an item related to the sale of the downtown Marriott and Embassy Suites hotels, an item related to professional engineering services, an item related to financing for the development of rental housing, an item rescinding financing for the development of the Pepper Building, an item making recommendations for appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions, as well as our public comment, period. And item G eleven, please.
Item G eleven, resolution authorizing the city of Winston-Salem to participate in the submission of a choice neighborhoods planning grant with the housing authority of Winston-Salem. Finance committee forwarded this item to council without a recommendation, with three in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining.
Following finance committee, we did have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Woods. Mr. Clark, are you prepared to?
I would make a motion that we approve G eleven.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Councilmember Burke?
This happens to be in the northeast, is that correct? Choice neighborhood. I had talked with the city manager to make sure that we have everything documented that we should. Now, Mr. Woods has been meeting with me on a regular basis to make sure I'm informed, but I did advise the city manager that all of us need to be informed. And what we're talking about this evening, in the follow-up from my conversation with you, Mr. City Manager, did you...
Yes, Councilmember Burke, Mayor Protem, the actual resolution has been amended from committee. It makes it clear that the city supports this initiative, but understands that the details will come back to this mayor and city council for any and all of the four-and-a-half million dollars of local match. Those projects will be under the complete control of this city council.
And I think, and I need to say this, that area, as I said, is a broken area. And if we don't do something with the money that we've already spent in the area, then it will not move forward. The Choice Neighborhood with what they're going to be putting there, this is for the public to understand, is going to be to enhance it. The city through the years spent money with individual homes in that area, and these homeowners are really not enjoying their homes because of the type of things that take place in that particular area. So I would hope that when the HUD sees what we're doing, that we will be able to get this project and move forward to make it a better neighborhood for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery?
Yes, one, just to say, I think that the housing authority is to be commended in their, as I've stated in the finance committee, of their perseverance on this project and continuing to press forth, particularly when you look at a plan and being able to get it from a plan to something that is visualized into something that gets to a place where it's actually actualized. And as to them being able to get the planning grant, which incorporates the community and the neighborhood and the process and the planning of what takes place here, and the Cleveland Avenue's master plan area runs from Martin Luther King, where Collin Place is always back into Cleveland Avenue homes, and understanding that investments have already begun to take place, the investments that the housing authority took in and around the Oaks at Tenth, the former Johnson Square apartments that were there, and then also Camden Station apartments that have been taking place, as well of investments in which the city has partnered with individuals on development within that area. So I think that when we talk about some of the impacted areas in our community that need additional investment, the Choice Neighborhood Grant offers the opportunity for the city[1793.24] need additional investment, the Choice Neighborhood grant offers the opportunity for the city to partner in being able to see transformation happen in that area. One of my concerns that I brought up in committee and will continue to work with, how that language is in terms of what is the final product that moves forward, is particularly ensuring that individuals who live in that neighborhood are able to have full case management services provided to them as they're processing from out of the neighborhood, prior to them leaving the neighborhood, that they have sufficient case management prior to leaving the neighborhood, so that when they go into whatever neighborhoods or communities that they're in, that they're able to survive and able to live and thrive within those neighborhoods. And then also making sure that when we look back and assess the community, that we're able to assess the reality of what those numbers look like, that we're comparing apples to apples and not apples to oranges in terms of what's to change and the benefit for the people who were in the community. So I look forward to that, and I'm grateful for the housing authority's perseverance. And I think this is something that community needs to look at and see the opportunity that it presents for us as a city.
Very good. Councilwoman Bessie?
For those who weren't following the discussion of this item in finance committee, it's a lot of moving parts here. This is authorization for the city to co-sign on an application with the housing authority of Winston-Salem to the federal government for a $30 million grant that would be used to create a renaissance of a very challenged area of the city. This kind of project, we need to have moving forward in areas that need the help. And as a part of that, co-signing, the city is committing to invest four and a half million dollars over a six-year period during the grant planning period, if the grant application is successful, in helping to redo, remake in a better way the area around the project for infrastructure, for economic development investment, for aesthetic improvements, and to make a major improvement in the community. So hopefully, the city's participation in this will enable the housing authority to make a successful grant application, and we can move forward with dramatic redevelopment of a challenged area of the city.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh?
I'm glad that the city is being asked to be a partner in this. I think it's really high time that we've gotten away from the old urban renewal model, where we go in and we destroy communities and then rebuild them. This is a much more holistic approach, where we are concerned about the people who live there now. We don't force them to move out and then move them back. So this is something I'm really excited about, and I'm hoping that we can also implement or bring some strategies around historic preservation into this. There's a, just a wonderful housing stock over there. The more of that that we can save and integrate into this program, I think the better off that we are. Kudos.
Councilmember Burke?
I was going to say, some of us experience HOPE 6. And with HOPE 6, somebody may want you to believe that we did a good job, housing authority, with the case management. But what happened, some of the folks did not, they moved, so they didn't come back.
Right.
It was there for them.
Right.
And the areas are productive. And I was pleased to go to HUD and sit with the people and talk about completing the Himali and getting the money for Happy Hill. I want to say this to the people who said and put out that the letters had been sent that they were going to be relocated. No letters have been sent from the housing authority. Nobody's sending any type of information. That was just not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Do have a motion to approve this. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 12.
Item G 12, resolution approving various lease agreements and estopples necessary to effectuate the sale of the downtown Marriott and Embassy Suites hotels to Hospitality Ventures Management Group. Finance committee forwarded this item to council without a recommendation.
Again, we did receive some additional information from staff, as well as the potential buyer of this. Councilmember Clark, are you?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion second. In discussion? Councilmember Montgomery, I'm sorry. Councilmember Montgomery?
Just a comment. I had some reservations in committee in reference to these items, and they were on two points in particular, in terms of understanding a timing method in which this came to council, but moreover, understanding the implications and impact of the transition in management and what that would mean for the convention center, in which we are taking a great deal of dollars to invest in and wanted to get a greater understanding of that group, understanding the benefit that the city would have, knowing that there would be a great investment in the hotels, and believe that that is much needed, needed to understand what that meant for the convention center. And we'll have some opportunity to talk to other people here locally in the community in terms of how this process all came together and those challenges, but I am happy to have been able to be informed and brought up and have great expectations for the partnership moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke?
Yes, I have, I did not have any concerns. My concerns have been taken care of, but I did say to the city manager that I felt that when we do give information, we need to give it in such a way that the public can understand. It said hotel sale. Well, we don't own the hotel. A hotel had already been. These were two business people, business groups negotiating a change in the ownership of the hotel.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Anytime you have an ownership change, in the front and the back of our minds, or my mind, it's always the employees who work inside of these facilities. I've had conversations with the staff from Hospitality Ventures, and I also talked about this in the finance committee. I was concerned about the jobs. I've been reassured that supporting this particular item does not mean that anyone will lose their jobs. Those who work at the hotels will still be able to feed their families and work, provide opportunities. We want to continue to bring in companies like we've done with Herbalife and Caterpillar and the relocation of Enemar. It's important. We also want to maintain the existing jobs in the city. So I will say that supporting this does not remove anyone from a job. Those who are currently working at the hotels will keep their jobs and continue to be able to feed their families. That's something that was very important for me in order to support this item.
Thank you. I think this reinforces a very solid and innovative agreement that the city negotiated many years ago, has saved the city a lot of money in the operation of our convention center. We do have a very proven operator coming in, ready to invest some significant dollars in the refurbishing of the Marriott and Embassy Suites, as, and as Councilmember Taylor mentioned, would not be any staffing changes there. So it's a good, solid deal for our community. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 13.
Item G 13, resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Kim Lee Horn for professional engineering services for the downtown parking analysis. Public Works Committee recommended this item with two in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining.
Councilmember Bessie?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
That's two.
Have two negatives. The motion passes six to two. Councilmember Taylor and Councilmember Montgomery voting no. Item 14.
Item G 14, resolution authorizing up to $236,000 in additional permanent financing for the development of 64 units of rental housing for families to be known as Rockwood at Oliver's Crossing Apartments located in the South Ward. This item was denied, was recommended for denial by finance committee and the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee, forwarded this item to council without a recommendation.
Councilmember Clark, since it did come out with a recommendation from your committee, I'll recognize you.
Okay, the recommendation was denial.
Denial.
And I'll make that motion that we denied this.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
No. Councilmember Montgomery, excuse me, McIntosh. Motion passes seven to one with Councilmember McIntosh voting no. Thank you. All right. Item 15.
Item G 15, consideration of a resolution to rescind permanent financing for the development of 54, the Pepper Building. A, resolution to rescind a permanent financing for development of 54 units of rental housing known as the Pepper Building. And B, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem for the fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Fair motion?
I'll make a motion if there's a second. I would like to.
Second.
Motion second. Go ahead, Councilmember Clark.
We did receive a letter, and it's in the packet, from Mr. Coe stating that he has, I think, sold it to someone else who's going to develop it. And I brought this up at finance just to go ahead and document the fact that he has officially withdrawn, and we can now put the money back where it came from and move forward.
Right. And I think it's actually good news in terms of the sale.
It is.
There'll be a really good development coming in there, and certainly appreciate Mr. Coe for all he's done for our community.
Yes.
So all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 16.
Item G 16, mayor joins recommendations for appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. A, emergency management advisory committee, Sanford Hinkle, term expiring September 2018, Kayla Selman, appointment term expiring September 2019, Daryl Jeter, appointment term expiring September 2017, Renaud D. Earl, reappointment term expiring September 2018, and Melinda K. Dongry and Andrew Blackwell, reappointments, both with terms expiring September 2019.
Fair motion?
So move.
Sir, second. Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Thank you. And L.B.?
Zoning Board of Adjustment, Diana Johnson, appointment term expiring October 2017.
Move.
Move.
Second. Motion second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That's unanimous. Thank you. Item 17.
Item G 17, public comment period.
This is a time once per month that we invite citizens to address the city council, and myself, on matters that are germane to city government. We'd ask individuals who are interested in speaking to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. First person signed up is James Goodwin. Okay. Golly Hassan, I believe Mr. Hassan may have left. Okay. And then Ms. Joanne Allen.
Joanne Allen, my information is already on the record. First of all, I'd like to say that, and I'm just repeating some of the things that you all are saying. Maybe you haven't recognized, but the city is already in a bad way. The reason you have to give more to each agency every year is because you all have not done your job effectively. And once again, that's nothing personal. One of the things is that the city, I keep hearing about the city having a triple-A credit rating. That doesn't mean anything, because basically, I mean, it's important, don't misunderstand me, it is very important, but all that means is that the same people keep getting taxed over and over again who can afford to pay it. And I'm talking about retirees. As far as having a triple-A rating, what that means is that the city can just borrow more money, but the taxpayers have to pay it. What I would like to say is this, is that we actually have more retirees here in the city of Winston-Salem. And in 2013, I came before some of you same individuals sitting here. And I made it known to you all then, when I talked about the pay raises and the pay with the sanitation workers here in Winston-Salem. They weren't being paid. I just had a person that came to me, had been working for the city for over 17 years, and he's just now making $11 an hour. So the problem is, and Ms. Adams as well, you stated that when you first came on board in 2009, that the police department was talking about pay. Well, here it is, 2016, and we're still talking about pay. And I told you all then, in 2013, that we will be talking about this again, but this time is different because they have forced your hand. See, this is what I said when I stated about the budget. When you do a budget, we've got to do a better job of putting the budget together. But guess what? I don't want to hear about Mr. Lee Garrity, you know, the, he's the one, he's the fall guy. He's not the fall guy. Every last one of you all up here, you are the fall guy.[1562.41]